As we do the business of this city, Harpsville, so that we can go forward and go forward together equally. In the name of our son Jesus Christ, we pray, and under the love of Jesus, we call Harpsville, Darlington, and surround him with it. Thank you. Please, now, if you ask in the name of our son Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And if, before we do the, the pledge, you could, yes, just a few seconds.
Yes. Would you quickly out-bout, give a moment, out, for the person at Austin, please? Thank you.
Now, uh, we'll do the pledge.
Let me introduce the people of the United States of America, and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you would, uh, have the ability to pledge, if you want to join us, please, please do. You know, the ability to pledge. I'll start it all. I pledge to build a stronger and prosperous community. I pledge my worship and my devotion to the Lord, and my worship and my devotion to our city. Thank you very much. And thank you. So, anybody who has not heard, there was a shooting in the parking lot of the adult education school in Darlington today. And so far, there has been one reported casualty of that violence. So, please keep. It was a juvenile, but I, I've heard that, yeah, but please keep the city of Darlington, of course, the victim and their families and friends, um, in, in your hearts, uh, as we go through the investigation in, into that. Um, I would entertain a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes of the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three regular city council meeting. Have a motion of second. And second, any discussion on that? And it's all right, all those in favor of approving the minutes in the, uh, waiting readings, please take so by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Moving on, and also, I, I'm sorry about the transition between talking about the victim to the business of the minutes. That was a little bit harsh. Anyway, I apologize. Um, moving into presentations, we have some very special guests tonight here today. Um, uh, Madam Clerk, would you mind introducing them?
Ms. Lily Vaughn?
Ms. Lily Vaughn, you?
I've got this one. Who do we have here tonight with the State Government Association for Harpsville School? Could you please come forward?
Yeah, please.
And I'll, another student brought their paperwork with them. Looks like they said they have it. We have to get a mayor's sign for it. Be quick.
Anyone who's here with your paper, thank you for being here, of course. And if you have your paper.
This is Ms. Lily Vaughn, she was the first one here tonight, Erin, and she does have her paperwork. They will be a TV show next morning, if you would send it.
Pleasure to meet you, thank you for being here. Anybody else need their, uh, their papers signed or just?
They don't have their papers yet. They don't have their papers.
Anybody?
Next time, we'll make sure we get those signed for you.
Anybody have any comments you want to speak? Believe it or not, me? All right, well.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, could, could somebody tell us why you're here, though? Anybody want to volunteer? Are you here to learn about the, uh, your local government and what it means to be engaged in the civics of your city? That's awesome. I really appreciate it, I appreciate your interest, I appreciate your willingness to be here, and I hope you continue to be engaged. And, uh, because you are our next generation leaders, believe it or not, whether you like it or not. Thanks, everybody, and I'd like you.
I know, girl, foul. I'm glad to speak with so many young ladies here, and as well, young sir. Yes, sir.
All right, our proclamations, we have three, should have brought them with me. The first on the stack is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Is anyone here to receive that? Please go forward, yes, thank you for being here. You'll just come up front, I'll, I'll read the highlights. Uh, whereas domestic violence is a serious social problem that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over four million Americans each year. And whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence. And whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas domestic abuse costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, law enforcement court costs, lost care, sick leave, at all. And whereas only a community, a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Harpsville and State of South Carolina, due to your Robert claim the month of October, two thousand twenty-three, this month, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, throughout the city, and urge all of you and all other citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence. For our communities. Thank you for being here this evening. Yes. Do the old, open it up, and hold it out, um, pose there. Get a frame out. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Okay, we've had some, uh, materials for you for their, their programming and events and, and some business cards. If, uh, you would like to ground that underway, whatever time you choose to scoot out tonight. Next is for Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, that's us.
He was talking so quiet.
All right, for this presentation, uh, thank, again, thank you for being here for, for, uh, taking care of this proclamation for us. We appreciate the work that you do. Whereas in South Carolina, approximately three thousand eight hundred forty-five women are diagnosed with breast cancer and six hundred seventy-eight die from the disease each year. And whereas in Darlington County, here, among women, breast cancer was the first most commonly diagnosed cancer and number two leading cause of death from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen. And whereas metastatic breast cancer occurs when breast cancer spreads to other parts of the body, including the bones, level of the brain, and everywhere else. And whereas, most importantly, or importantly, breast cancer screening helps find cancer early when it's more treatable. And it is, whereas it is vital those affected by breast cancer have access to quality, affordable care, and the research of all forms of breast cancer continues to vigorously, to be being vigorously supported. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Awareness Month, serves as an opportunity to increase awareness of the disease and to encourage individuals to have a plan to detect the disease in early stages. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Harpsville and State of South Carolina, due to your Robert claim the month of October twenty-three, this month, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month throughout the city of Harpsville, and encourage all citizens to support the fight against breast cancer. And never be silent as we keep winning and fighting until the fight is won, because all of us know this issue far too intimately. So, I'm honored to present this proclamation to all of you tonight. Again, thank you for being here, thank you for the work that you do. Would anybody like to comment?
Yes, uh, my name is James Justin Junior. I'm Sheriff of Darlington County, and we have an event on Saturday from ten to one. It is a breast cancer, uh, lunching event for, uh, breast cancer in October. So, it's gonna be held at Jerusalem Baptist Church on Sixth Street. So, any of you who want to come, it's free. Please come and join us in the event, and there will also be some dual prizes. So, we'd like for all of you to come out and just enjoy and see what the event is all about. Thank you so much.
I heard free lunch being called. Ready for a, but does anybody else have any comment? Just go ahead and stamp a picture. Stamp, stamp, stamp it? All right, thank you all very much.
Can we have anybody here to, uh, accept the International Baccalaureate Program? Ms. Albrecht, for Lewis and some students?
Don't hurt it. Johnny, where are they going?
Okay, um, many of you may know that Harpsville High School for many years, in fact, I think it's a, uh, special year, Ms. Albrecht, you want to talk about that a little bit?
It is our fifteenth year at Harpsville High School. The International Baccalaureate Program was started by our very own Johnny Andrews and Dr. Charlie Burry. It is a two-year program in which students in grades eleven to twelve can earn to, can elect to earn a second high school diploma. The three students who are up here are in their second year of being able to earn that, um, distinguished award. We are very, very proud of these students. They can earn that in, um, several subjects, in English, and a world language, in math, and, uh, um, history, and a science, in T O K, and also in other subjects. And so, tonight, Mr. Andrews and I are proud to recognize these students.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Albrecht, and I would ask the students to introduce themselves, and if you're a full diploma student, uh, please give us the topic of your extended essay. If you're not, maybe one of the, um, other subjects papers that you'd like to give.
My name is Marshall Dickford.
Our artificial intelligence. Those small topics.
My name is Martin Sasta, and my extended essay topic is on pollution in India. And I'm looking at a certain initiative in India that's promoting electric vehicles.
Pollution in India and initiative promoting electric vehicles in India. And I think that India will soon be the most popular destination on the planet.
My name is Michael, and my extended essay is about aground pose poetic principles.
All right, and, um, just want to re-part of this proclamation. Whereas Harpsville High School International Baccalaureate Program is integral to the growth and longevity of school and community, and whereas the spring department of Harpsville International Baccalaureate Program is a premier educational opportunity for students, and whereas Harpsville High School I V seeks to partner with school, community, and love of the community, and the international community, and whereas Harpsville High School I V promotes and encourages students to be caring, balanced, and academic risk takers. Uh, we are declaring the week of October ninth through thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, is International Baccalaureate Week. And I'd give Coach Lewis, I call him Coach, Coach Lewis an opportunity to speak also.
As long as, thank you, Mr. Andrews, for your vision, been many years ago. And of course, thank our students for their hard work, um, as Albrecht believes this program and, uh, the city for funding this, uh, for the occasion to celebrate this. Thank you.
Thank you, and maybe we can get close in for a picture here.
How are you, Chris?
Please give around a half speed of Harvard.
Johnny, thank you. All right. Um, this man wanted to, uh, highlight something for us, if you would go ahead and before move on, to, um, help comments, please.
Yes, since we have such a great crowd of visitors in the house tonight, today is Mental Health Awareness Day. And we missed it, I mentioned last year, and I asked for it to be on one, but somehow it dropped to crack. But we, as a people, we have to see signs early and try to get people help. We have a mental health center here, but there are other places that offer mental health, uh, opportunities that we don't have. So, beginning with children, right on up to adults, mental health awareness. You, you need to pay attention to the signs. So, I would like to see the city, um, make this proclamation, and we can have it, um, delivered to the mental health, uh, department. I can take it, but I, I would like to see the city have something around town.
I agree, so obviously, for the media, those are my industry, so thank you for coming up, and I think it's totally doable for us to have a proclamation on the schedule. So, thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, maybe work in coordination with Mr. Doctor here.
Absolutely. Very good, very good, thank you. That brings us to public comment. Um, a couple, some clarity for this, we have several names, uh, signed with Steve, which is great, that's, that's what these meetings are for. Uh, three of you here to speak on issues related to Sunoco. Are those issues specific to the order of business we have later in the agenda? Or are they some other form of comment? And I ask because if they're related to the ordinance, we need to wait until a public hearing for that. If, if it's not about that, but something else, then you're welcome to speak right now. All related to the ordinance, okay. Um, and, uh, Craig Webber, that brings you next on the list. Um, and just for technicalities, want to ask, if your comments are related to the interest of the public, then you're welcome. You, you are a candidate, so that changes things. If it's related to, uh, your campaign platform, then, um, maybe ask that you refrain. But I did want to say, that brings me to it, I meant to, to say this before the proclamation, to me, many of you may just have noticed that this block is closed today. Um, the reason for that is the, uh, the South Island Department of Commerce is shooting an advertisement for nationwide distribution. And they picked Harpsville as one of four cities in the state, us, Greenwood, West Columbia, and Little River. So, we are on a very short list of cities that they chose to highlight in their commercial in order to pitch the idea that South Carolina is the place that you want to live and work. They asked us to use discretion in, uh, notifying the public about what they were doing. We did send out a road closure notice last Wednesday, so six days ago, to our merchants who were most affected by it. But we had to, um, we had to refrain from fully explaining what was going on until the required twenty-four hour notice. So, again, I, if, if you want to make a comment on that for public interest, you're very welcome. At least go forward, state your name and address for the record, comments to this address.
All right. Well, you can just cut me off, it, it seems like it's inappropriate. Craig Webber, two oh five Greenwood Avenue. Um, and it was going to be just a simple ask about, uh, a little better communication regarding, um, street closures. Um, and I was just, my, my thoughts on that were that we could have a little better, um, maybe marketing, um, stuff that went out, some signs, offering alternative parking locations and, um, places so that the businesses that are affected by, you know, a street closure in our main, you know, section downtown um, can still get some, uh, patrons and, and people to, to visit, and just making sure that that's communicated. Because, uh, as you said, the, the communication just went out, um, yesterday afternoon regarding that. So, felt like it was a little quick for some of the local residents and, and people just, uh, not know what was going on. They were, you know, coming to visit some of the businesses right now, so that's all for sure.
And I know you, you heard, you had some, some phone calls, so you're about to follow up on it, but.
Thank you.
Project your comments, we always take, uh, constructive criticism, uh, to a panel, so thank you again. Uh, we have one more person signed up, uh, for the public comment session. Um, uh, Gregor, uh, I'm having trouble, Marion Chong, here to speak on the, uh, N C N W. If you would come forward.
I'm sorry, I made a mistake, I didn't mean to sign that.
Well, I'm still glad you're here. Still glad you're here. All right, that moves us right along, it brings us, um, to the manager update. Do you have any? Yeah?
So, uh, one just quick, uh, reminder of Taste of Harpsville is coming up this Thursday. Please make sure you have your, like, yeah, there's something, it's available, they also, Mary Fuse, and I think she's got a few stuff in her pocket ready. Oh, no, fine, safe. And I wanted to, I wanted to highlight this, uh, today, I asked the, uh, chief of, you know, to kind of provide a list of all activities we had this weekend. Unfortunately, we had the incident today. Uh, Darlington, there was a student, um, understanding that a student was shot and killed, unfortunately. And that wasn't the only thing that happened this past weekend. Uh, we had several calls, and I do commend the sheriff for being here, because that is a very busy man. Um, he came here to do this, but he has been working tirelessly all weekend. And so have our officers. Um, in addition to that, we assisted Darlington County and Florence County with another shooting incident this weekend. Unfortunately, not the city, but still affects us. And I wanted to, uh, commend them, because not only just because of that, in addition to that, all the little stuff that they're doing throughout the community. I asked him to send me a list of just things, and that was a long list, chief. All the things that are being happening, including, you know, finding a missing child, things that don't make the news, but are just here. And it's something I want to highlight, and it got me thinking about the fact that our officers, and in fact, our firefighters, our sanitation workers, all these things happen without obvious, you know, and they work tirelessly to get things done. Your water's turned on, your trash is picked up, your fires are put out, your streets are safe because of the action of these animals. And, and human resources, see, human resources keeps us objective as well. But it just got me thinking that how much we appreciate all the work that they do. And I want to thank them for all the work that they do, because they worked without stops. And so, I know it's a solemn reminder, um, because of what happened there, but I'm very proud of all of them.
I will echo that thanks, I know it comes from me, I know it comes from all of us here on the bench, that we really appreciate the work that you do, especially when it's, when it's as hard as it has been. So, thank you very, very much.
And that makes it even worse, I can introduce a new one. Um, so Kendrick, are you here? Yeah. Kendrick Robinson is our new Director of Parks and Recreation. So, I wanted to formally introduce him, he is from, he's not originally from Wrightville, Colorado, but he came from Wrightville, Colorado. We pulled him out of the Midwest goodness, is that Midwest or is that just West? Oh, okay. He's close to the Rockies, and we're ha- happy to have him, but he's originally from Georgia, so I love him even more. But, uh, we're so happy to have him. He, uh, when we interviewed the panel, he came out on top with just the energy, the excitement, the passion, the knowledge, uh, for someone. We're so excited to have him join us. Kendrick, welcome, as well as saying, but he's joined the team, so he's joined the good ones, we're happy to have him.
All right, moving right along. Freeze by the get set agenda, again, uh, thank you to all of our, our staff, department heads, preparing those reports and comments to keep us up to date. And that brings us right on into unfinished business, item number six. This is a doozy, Mr. Manager, if you would, please, uh, publish the ordinance, hot title and presentation. Yeah, take sit.
I need it. This is public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-four fifty-nine. An ordinance amending the City of Harpsville Code by amending chapter fifty-four nuisances by the addition of chapter fourteen, fifty-four nuisances. Article six nuisances affecting public peace by the addition of chapter fifty-four nuisances. Article seven nuisances affecting public order by amending and restating chapter fifty-eight of offenses and miscellaneous provisions, article two, offenses against property, and by amending chapter ten building, building regulations, article two, technical code in section ten yash thirty-eight, International Property Maintenance Code, by amending the City of Harpsville position for the International Property Maintenance Code associated faster peace and other sections.
Don't you love this book? Any comments before, uh, we, this man?
Uh, we did, um, this has been a, um, a very, uh, a long, a long process. Uh, we've worked extensively with our police department, fire department, and tenants department, which is now under fire. Uh, but the ultimate goal was to look at ways to help remediate, um, and mitigate some of the issues we've had with some warmer nuisance properties. These are to be anything, um, uh, you know, properties that continue to cause problems in the neighborhood. And, you know, these things need to be addressed. And so, what it really does is gives our fire and police the tools to better mitigate these problems. Um, it allows us to identify them and then go through a legal process to then remediate those that we have to. And of course, it follows a due process, we will assert reserve, and, you know, follow the same procedure, of, because, but it gives another tool in our arsenal, our toolbox, to be able to handle these properties. And really, because when something happens and affects people's, their neighborhoods, we want to be able to help fix that. And we don't want to be kind of hands-free, fire, and, you know, allow these to do that. And we're going to use it due just to sleep, of course, but we'll make sure we're not doing this, uh, without any, uh, you know, concern for what's going on and what people's, uh, situations are. Folks really want to be able to handle that, if they come up. Uh, another full side note, this is kind of more a fun one, is that this also introduces the allowance for bee sanctuaries. So, at the same time, we are applying to become a bee city, and we're partnering with some Denver school kids, I see John Shannon's in the audience, though, um, who have been taking up bees, and if you haven't noticed, they just got forty pounds of honey out of one bee box, bee colony, that they were so kind to share with people. But the idea of a bee ordinance is to allow some people to turn their properties into a bee sanctuary. It still has to be maintained, because it's not just going to be overgrown, and so it has to have some maintenance. But with that, we try to encourage bee population across the area by encouraging wild herb, not wild herb, um, domestic plants to south here, native plant species to be grown here. And so, this was kind of a double doozy, and it's a long, as you can tell by the title, the changes are quite extensive as well. But that's exactly what we're trying to do, is to give ourselves a single tool to handle problems, so to say.
Very good summary, thank you.
Can I ask one question, please?
Perhaps maybe, I think it'd be better if we did the, uh, the dynamic against this.
Yeah, I need to do the, um, public hearing, too, but don't, don't let any freeze value. Uh, thank you, Mr. Manager. Um, I'll now open the public hearing for the final reading of ordinance forty-four fifty-nine. If you would like to comment on this, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to two minutes or less. Anybody? All right, we're hearing none. Hearing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Ordinance forty-four fifty-nine. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve the final reading and waiving of the public reading of ordinance forty-four fifty-nine. Have a motion second, this man?
Is it going to be one, um, commercial and three rounder?
So, anything following our business license ordinances, we're looking at those for identified properties. So, if it's a rental property, we'll move through it the same way we deal with any type of rental regulations.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
Anything else before the vote? All right, hearing none. Um, I would entertain a vote to approve the final reading of ordinance forty-four fifty-nine, and all those in favor, please do take so by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Ordinance forty-four fifty-nine passes. Move on to number seven, public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-four sixty. Mr. Manager, if you would, publish the title and presentation, correct.
Yes, sir, to amend the City of Harpsville officials ending that by rezoning two properties on Seminole Road identified tax map number zero five five one one zero one zero seven and zero five five one five zero one zero nine four, for the residential R one to industrial entry.
Got it, thank you very much. Um, you want to comment or just move into the public hearing?
I think we have some people wanting to speak.
Yes, let's go ahead and speak, all right. This, this is one we have, we have some guests tonight. Um, Perkins is our first on the list, if you would like to comment on ordinance forty-four sixty. Oh, oh, yes, the, the public hearing is now hereby declared open. Um, if you would like to come and speak on this, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to two minutes or less in respect of, uh, time, but I expect very much.
Thank you. I am just gonna show y'all, if you want to pass it around, my members, that's where we live.
Could you go ahead and state your name and address for the record?
Thank you.
In the address, please.
Five eleven Kenwood Avenue.
Awesome, awesome, thanks for that, take it out.
Thank you very much, and this one can go this way. I'm just showing you, that five eleven Kenwood Avenue is directly in my property line, butting right beside it. And so, that's caused me, as a resident of Harpsville, a lot of stress for years. We don't mind Sunoco, I love Sunoco. Sunoco's gonna walk our family, me personally. We don't mind Sunoco, I love Sunoco, Sunoco's going to lock our family, me personally, my mom would retire there if it buttoned for cancer first, so. Sunoco's important and valuable to Hartsville. But for the years passed, and, and Bobby's aware of this, and so are some others, the water drainage is an issue for us terribly in our area. The back ditch, I, I see it's getting closed, I'm sure we're going to have answers for all this stuff tonight. But the number one question that it brings to me is where the water's going to be running. We've had engineers look at our property, we had city administrators come and look at our property, had gone to every government we could think of to try and give us some direction on what we should do. And we have nowhere to run, a English drain, a French drain, excuse me, we have nowhere to run the water. So that number one is my question. Number two is a concern about Patrick Highway Road and what it's done for that neighborhood. And I want to know if that's the same thing that's going to be doing to our neighborhood. Because supposedly, we live in a historical section of town, I really don't care about that, because the town is a community of people. And I just want to know, is that going to also be what happens to the rest of our neighborhood? And then, of course, the last thing that I can think of is if we could, will there be other hearings or introductions to people to where we can possibly meet within ourselves? And say, hey, we like to know the heads up before, you know, the sawdust comes in tending over all of our, all of our colonies. We've handled the paint spray that came to Sunoco and everything else all through the years. This is a little upsetting that we didn't have a warning, but I know y'all can help that. So those are the three main things, there's information, where's the word going, and what's it going to do to our town. Those are the three things I'd greatly like to be addressed.
Thank you for being here and valid points. Mr. Manager, would you mind commenting on some of the real, or preventative rather, efforts that the council is just working on?
Sure, so this went through, this is a, so any type, any type of reset, I'd ask you to do a planning commission, similar questions were asked on these things. Major concern, of course, I have anytime I have an industrial use, we're going to get residential crews, insurance problem buffering, buffering between those. Sunoco is doing expansions, as we know, you know, they're investing in their property right now. Part of this project is to expand out that machine shop that is located right behind the G M O M. And that machine shop is going to extend, and I believe it's just fifty-seven-five percent. And what they're seeing is that they did request to add an empty truck entrance around the corner of that upper part of those properties and the parking stop. They are going to be covering, they're going over that ditch, and I, I know that ditch well, I drive it every story. And so their understanding is that they're going to have to handle a tile over that area to make sure that water still flows through, that air cannot be obstructed. That is part of the, you know, when they get through the engineering, that's going to be addressed in that regard. As far as notice, this is the public hearing for it, and I do believe we did encourage Sunoco to notify the residents about what was going on, because again, this is a vacuum, that's true. But there are hostings, I know, of course, there's a lot of rules, but it is, that's sort of, that's what I understand. But overall, the property we did ensure when we asked for the, the planning commission process, and something that we talked about here is that we have more than what's required. Buffering between us, they're going to maintain a very substantial, substantial buffer between that. You will still see it going where you see now, but you shouldn't see much more. And that was our overall, just to make sure. Now, as far as truck traffic, they are doing a huge increase of that. If you guys have noticed, and this might be a day ahead of what, similar questions, but they are doing substantial improvements to Fifth and Sunoco Road. If you guys might have noticed, that was again a DOT Sunoco project together, so they can take those trucks and keep them off of Fifth Street, or keep them off of the majority of Fifth Street, and take them through Patrick, come into the facility, make it one way. Ultimately, our goal is to get the trucks off of the residential roads. We have, we have a Fortune five hundred company in our backyard that causes a lot of truck traffic. And I think we all have, because I don't think, I think everyone is who's in everyone's head. It's just something that they are, I think they're making improvements towards it, but these are, you know, concerns I think should be brought up to Sunoco, you know, good neighbor type questions.
Is there any information for direction on how I would bring that up to Sunoco? Specific names of people and how I could get a direction on that? I know y'all might not fairwell and give another name or number, but maybe someone just give me all information, pass it along for the media.
I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting, I'll ask my partner if he did. Or if you just, if, you know, if you touch our, or touch our, so make sure that you're, thank you.
Alright, thank y'all.
I have a question.
Yes.
Turn into water.
Yes.
It is drainage water, okay. My question is, what's the source, is it a multiple source of the water, like it's natural, or is it a discharge?
It's a discharge from Sunoco in there, so I can go ahead and answer that question.
But should we, did we take that offline though? I don't think it's relevant to the ordinance, is it?
I agree, it's a one minute summary, like.
No, not, not concerning the groundwater, it's treated right.
This, this is stormwater, it's going on.
Well, the parking lot that y'all were discussing, without speaking out of turn, I'll get away and make sure I'm not, I can speak, because. The, the, the parking lot has, and I have pictures, the parking lot is made and designed to have the curve to allow the water to run down into that ditch. And it is made higher than our property. And it runs down into a ditch behind the building that he's talking about, and it's made to do that at least four different locations. To run into the ditch that's behind our home that goes all the way down, but also used to send the water to the lake in one direction and send the water to the lake out straight. This water also comes from the top of the Sunoco wheel and runs down as a direct to go to the side. And then it comes down, so we are literally in a hole, in a vault. And so when I say.
Close the third street, that's not when you, when you close the third street in.
It is five eleven Kenwood right behind the main hatch.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Helen, he's next on the list, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on, Mr. David Helen, if you would like to come forward to comment on this ordinance. Again, please state your name and address for the record, keep your comments to two minutes or less.
Hey, David Helen, four one four East Home Avenue, been resident here for about twelve, thirteen years, something like that. I would request that, tonight, that you table the action of passing this ordinance. And let me state reasons here. They have applied for the, the variance or the change, the rezoning. And they want to allow for truck ingress and ingress and regress from their new expanded facility. They, the planning commission are already voted thumbs up on this, after speaking with Ben Daniel. Found out that the planning commission did not ask the right questions. Question number one, hey, I want to build, I want to double my machine shop inside, and I want new ingress and regress. Well, question number one in my brain is, how many trucks go in and out of there today? Question number two is, how many trucks do you project to go in and out of there in the future? No one knows that. If they're going to be five, if they're doing five trucks today, and they're going to do eight trucks in the future, I don't care. If they're going to be five trucks today and a hundred and fifty trucks in the future, I care. Why do I care? Because Sunoco, great corporate neighbor, does super things for Hartsville, does not always manage its trucks properly. In twenty fifteen, we had to bring a proposed ordinance before the board until Sunoco caved on its action of running trucks up and down Second Street. Forty-five, every forty-five minutes, twenty-four hours a day, through the college and danger line. And down Home Avenue and Carolina, which are not made to hold eighty thousand pound semis. Okay, so they've done this in the past. So I want to know, how many trucks are coming in and out of that machine shop? Now, do we have any Sunoco people here today?
Didn't make it.
Nope. Can you answer questions? How many trucks in and out, in the future?
Yeah, that is, we, we. We didn't get to hear your comments.
Got it, so, so, part of the ordinance says that it requires a new track, and the planning commission said it's a minimum impact. They don't know how many trucks are going to come in and out, they don't know what the impact is. To speak to your point, it's not about buffer for flooding, and it's not about the buffer zone for flooding, it's about impermeable ground surface versus permeable ground surface. And if they're going to double the size of their machine shop, they're going to increase their impermeable ground surface, they're going to make the flooding worse. So, minimum impact, number of trucks, also, are the trucks going within Sunoco property? Or are they going over the road? That's an important question. Sunoco drivers know where to drive. The over the road truckers put an address in Waze or Apple Maps, they don't know where to drive. They end up on Home Avenue, they end up on Second Street. Now, they have blocked off Second Street to their, kudos, excellent job. They blocked off the Second Street truck entrance, they put up new signage, they have an emergency truck turnaround area. That's all good things, you still get a lot of lost semis on Second Street though. So, what I would ask, if they, if they've invested in new signage, let's invest in some new signage on the fifth, and let's invest in some new signage on the third. There is no signage on third going south up from Sunoco that said, no trucks beyond this point. They need to pay, they need the signs, it says, no trucks beyond this point, all Sunoco traffic turn left. They have very little signs, I think the lettering is about four inches tall, that says eight-nine, this, this way. There's also, historically not good sign.
We can only give the next speaker an opportunity to speak, but thank you very much for being here.
So, I would, I would say that, just in closing, that congratulations on South Carolina being named a, you know, in the commercial of their shooting. But we don't want semi tractor trailer trucks driving through residential neighborhoods in the middle of the commercial.
Yeah, you're right in point, I, I used to work across the street, this is not a, a product production facility, it's a building where they made machines to make products, so it's not a volume game. I didn't see a ton of regular traffic coming in and out of machine manufacturing, they, they build the machines that service their own production facilities here in Hartsville, or they send them out to others. And as we've commented, you know, they refurbished another road and built in a turn lane on Fifth Street to send the traffic north of fifteen out of town. I don't anticipate this expansion of their, of machine manufacturing to include significant increase in traffic to, to serve our residents. And obviously, you know, where you live up East Home is a whole different ballgame.
But fortunately, I've asked that in the planning commission, so I would ask that this, this board tonight move to defer. To table the requests, because they don't have all the information to make a decision. So, let's not make a decision, let's get the information, and then make an educated decision, not only on the trucks, but on the permeable, impermeable ground surface and flooding. And on signage, that is, there are some notions of stop signs and do not enter signs on the plants themselves, but there are not, they're not clear enough on the, on the plans. And there's nothing for northbound third before now that's got me, is where they need to be.
Thanks, so, thanks very much. We've got one more. Godby?
Godby.
Godby. If you would please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and also please try to keep your comments to two minutes or less.
Obviously, I'll be, I'll be, four one four East Home. I want to reiterate what David Helen just said, considering the trucks, and I appreciate that there are some conversations going on about that. I also want to reiterate that working with Sunoco can be valuable and can be useful, but I also want to reiterate that it can be challenging. And so I would ask that the committee not take it on, I think it will work out, I think it will be okay. Because as we, David mentioned back in twenty fifteen, we went extensively grounded out with Sunoco. And I'd also encourage working directly with Sunoco, as was suggested to the earlier family, might not be the direct way to go. It was difficult for us to do, we came to a good resolution, but it was time consuming and challenging. I also want to make sure that you already have seen where the building seems to be happening. And as the city has assurances that trucks going in and out of that facility go in and out on the prescribed routes, and not, oh, I'm thinking right, I'm going to go up the third, it's going to be easier. Or I'm going to scoot across here and go up second, and not have to go over the Patrick Highway, not go in and out of gate nine where they're supposed to go. So I would just ask that the city be very diligent in how they are communicating this with, with Sunoco, because it is challenging for individuals to do. But you as a group, I think, have a louder voice, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I do want to, I think it's prudent to give an opportunity to the gentleman who raised her hand, if you wanted to, to sort of comment, explain whatever words you want to do real briefly, please, I think it would be for the public.
Certainly.
If you would, go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Dan Hicken, working at Sunoco. I'm probably not going to hit everything you guys talked about, but number one, the stormwater issue, the amount of impermeable space that we have today with the new construction is not changing at all. So the, we're not increasing impermeable areas. Yeah, the current areas paved, the parking lot that we're expanding into, so that remains the same. So the, the permit through DEHAC is, is gone through for the permitting for stormwater. The stormwater runoff drainage from the site does drain to that west ditch, you're correct. And some of it will still drain to that west ditch, so we're going to be improving the ditch by making it a little bigger. The storm head wall that goes beneath Sunoco Road, there's two thirty-six inch lines that go beneath the railroad track to that large junction box. The bottleneck is from that junction box across Sunoco Road. So the stormwater infrastructure that we'll be installing, we're moving the head wall towards the west a little bit. The stormwater infrastructure that will be installed is larger than we have today to the junction box. But the bottleneck from the junction box outfall to Black Creek is going to stay the same. So I wish there was a way that, you know, we can increase that, but that's out of the bounds of the project's scope right now. So, we understand the stormwater's hit the ditch now, it'll be clean, infrastructure will be improved, but the bottleneck is still that large junction box outward to Black Creek. The truck traffic that we have in the project is about four to five trucks a day now. The volume will not increase significantly, probably more than to eight trucks a day in the M and M expansion that we have at that project site today. So, the truck volume is very small from what we have to increase on the truck volume.
Alright, thank you so much for your clarification, thank you for being here. Alright, that's everyone on. Do it after the motion. Yeah, do it after the motion, okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, that's everyone who was asked to speak. For, ordinance forty-four sixty is now closed. I would entertain a motion to approve the final reading and waiving of complete reading of ordinance forty-four sixty. Other than comments and questions? Have a motion, do I, second? Second, have a motion second now. Oh, sorry.
I wanted to ask about the homes along Timwood. Were, were the beaches, granted, did you compare when you bought your homes or built your homes? And, and there that done?
Yes, sir.
Um, and, uh, probably you didn't foresee it as being a problem.
Anything else, so this, we're done with these questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I wanted to clarify something too, um, just to talk about what's at both responsibilities to the planning commission and what's going on here. So, th- this is a rezon application, so any other, um, infrastructure being installed is actually on land, it's not part of this rezon conversation. We aren't talking about installing from roadway, but none of these questions came up, and I was kind of trying to explain that, obviously did a very poor job. But basically, the, the questions did not come up in what I asked, because they weren't a part of the perp rule of the conversation. Um, now, we were in the understanding when the gentleman came to, and we do appreciate the company of the planning commission, that this was not going to increase the traffic, we did have the understanding that it was not going to be significant increase. They are, I think you gave me a explaining what's going on, they are in the city limits, they are falling into our building official. So they also have the federal property codes, so they have to bill everything to DEHEC permits, they have to get engineering, they have to get all those things taken care of before they can do a poll permit. So those things are being handled on a separate issue. Issue tonight is simply rezoning two properties from, uh, R one to M two. And the major concerns from the planning commission are how this will impact the, when they break parcels. And that's what was addressed in the meeting, talking about the buffers, and that is how we would remediate those problems, we would talk those things. And Sunoco, to their credit, you know, I, I think that some of the issues we're talking about with signage certainly should be talked out and addressed. Um, that's a good neighborhood conversation, those are things we handle, but they're not really pertaining to what we're talking about tonight. So, just to kind of keep things in the same, what we need to talk about tonight, those are valid concerns we need to address, and look for tonight for your vote. Is simply dealing with the rezoning issues, and that's what the planning commission, uh, gave a recommendation on, to then go to you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from bench, questions, if you want to go ahead and vote? Uh, we have a motion, we have a second, um, all those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance forty-four sixty, please indicate, so the second, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
None.
The ayes have it, final reading of ordinance forty-four sixty has been approved. Moving on to item eight, Mr. Manager, if you would publish the ordinance by title and presentation for the record.
Yes, sir, it's Public Hearing and Final Reading of Ordinance forty-four sixty-two to approve leasing, to approve leasing the property of the quarter of Marlboro Avenue and Seventh Street to the Hartsville West Beach lot. Does Skip want to read it again?
Yeah, I think it's my fault though.
No, that's, I wrote on the wrong one. So, let me, let me scoot back, would you, would you do this?
Yes.
Yes, sir, it's a Public Hearing and Final Reading of Ordinance forty-four sixty-one. Amending the business license ordinance for the City of Hartsville, South Carolina to update the class schedules required by Act one seventy-six and twenty twenty. And if you like, I've explained, so this is a now requirement under the new state law. Every year we must be updating our class schedule to make sure we're in compliance with the twenty twenty Act one seventy-six. And what this is, again, just for clarification, it's standardized business license process across the states. Now, wherever you go, if you have a business license, uh, process in, uh, Hartsville, it's the same as the process in Darlington, it's the same as the process in San Diego. And every single class schedule is the same, so everyone's operating the same thing. You still need business licenses from each municipal city, offered in those cities, but does standardize this. So this is really a now requirement that you never see weird.
It's true, you have the classifications.
Exactly, we, it is a class schedule based on what your business is, you pay a requirement, and those are completely available online, entire states operate under the same business license law. Um, so we're, we're just following the law right now, fair enough.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the final reading of ordinance forty-four. Uh, we've got, I, I did that, so, um, to hear about like the open of the public hearing of ordinance forty-four sixty-one, if you would like to comment on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, keep your comments to two minutes or less. No jumpers?
Sure.
All right, hearing none, I will hear about close the public hearing for ordinance forty-four sixty-one, and I would now entertain a motion to approve the final reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-one.
Mr. Mayor, so moved?
Aye. I have a motion, a second in discussion on this. Final questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor of approving, approving the final reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-one, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, ordinance forty-four sixty-one moves forward. Now, if you will cover here, item nine, forty-four sixty-two, Mr. Manager, review and publish it by title and presentation for the record.
Yes, sir, it's Public Hearing and Final Reading of Ordinance forty-four sixty-two, to approve leasing the property of the quarter of Marlboro Avenue and Seventh Street to the Hartsville West Beach lot.
And this is a renewal.
And you know, I'm in on this, reveal that we, um, it's right diagonal to our, to our part rather, and, um, we sure encourage that if we use it much possible, because we, um, we think it's a good partnership.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Uh, the public hearing for this forty-four sixty-two is now open, anyone who'd like to comment on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, keep your comments to two minutes or less. I don't see any jumpers on that. Seeing none, uh, the public hearing ordinance forty-four sixty-two is now closed, and I would entertain a motion to approve the final reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-two. I have a motion, a second in discussion of forty-four sixty-two.
Mr. Mayor, we had a conversation about giving it to him.
I've answered that, Mr. Manager, anybody else?
We have none, I think we prefer to keep this in leasing just in case we want it back. Here's a question.
No, I said, there it is. Anything else, or before we vote, all right, I will, uh, if you're a vote, all those in favor of approving ordinance forty-four, approving the final reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-two, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, I have it. Uh, the final reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-two is approved. That brings us to item ten, forty-four sixty-three, Mr. Manager, review and publish it by title and presentation for the record.
Yes, sir, it's to lease a portion of tax debt number zero five six, zero six, zero two, zero seven, located at one one four South Fourth Street, two Brays, South Ward.
Um, everybody familiar with this one? We have a, uh, yeah, let me open the public hearing. The public hearing for this forty-four sixty-three is now open, anyone who'd like to comment on ordinance forty-four sixty-three, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, keep your comments to two minutes or less, please. Hearing none, the public hearing for ordinance forty-four sixty-three is now closed. This item is related, just checking to make sure I'm speaking correctly, is related to the next item, a new business. Um, it was suggested that rather than spending time having two readings to renew the lease of this scrap of land, uh, every year that we, uh, transfer ownership of property. Yeah, so, um, unless any one objects, I would, uh, suggest that we not make a motion to approve this ordinance so that it does, and we move forward with the next order of the business, um, to make it a permanent change, so we don't have to keep doing this. Would anyone like to make a motion? Otherwise. Hearing none, uh, ordinance forty-four sixty-three, uh, the ayes on bench, and we will move on to item eleven. Table?
Not finished, got the right one.
It's good, that.
Hey, so, um, Mr. Manager, if you would move right along and publish ordinance forty-four sixty-three by title and presentation.
Uh, first reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-four is an ordinance authorizing sale of portion of tax debt number zero five six, zero six, zero two, zero seven, located at one one four South Fourth Street, to retrofit, since he can see in twenty-seven hundred fourteen square feet, plus or minus other values related to.
So, um, as you, that we discussed here during the common section before, this is a narrow strip of land and curb that gives the business access to their, any parking, any, it has no discernible value.
And it's our understanding that this was a piece that was left off there for sale of the original property, now from the city to the, um, current tenant of the previous owner, two percent. And it really just provides the, um, KDA access to a very, very, very piece of property. Has still no discernible value other than to the property seller, and I'm really sure it was caught when the first sale was done, and we want to make sure it's cleared out now.
Uh, next time I'll let you decide. All right, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading, reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-four. I have a bunch of motions, all those in favor of approving ordinance forty-four sixty-four, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, first reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-four, it's forward, it's reached the item twelve, Mr. Manager, it's important.
Yes, sir, this is first reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-five. An ordinance amending certain sections of chapter seventy, article one of the criminal ordinances of the City of Hartsville, South Carolina, establishing an expanded commercial service boundary to the provisions of the, of the collection and disposal of commercial solid waste services and other matters related to it. And to, in summary, uh, we have a commercial, in addition to our residential trash we pick up, we also have a, uh, pre-running commercial business. And so we have long talked about expanding out and speaking with our staff. They feel very confident, especially with the purchase last year, thank you, of the new garbage truck for our front loader truck services, uh, to expand this out, uh, into our, um, outside of the city limits. We were provided with a map of the P schedule, and we think that this would be an excellent way to kind of generate some revenue and provide exceptional service to residents outside of the city limits.
And I also include, um, that several apartment conflict, we have dumpsters, and there are certain things that for some reason or another, they end up side road at the height of these, you match the quality, that kind of thing, to a pre-road, see the same thing. Apartment conflict are responsible for their own, correct rule, it's not some part, or each part, then the city have responsibility. So I'm glad that you have the ability to offer the service, which should be not accepted from the city. I suggest that the city, um, close the portion to crack down on the apartment conflict and have them, um, go to the fine side table, just like any other.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it, let's go ahead, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of forty-four sixty-five.
Mr. Mayor, so move, approve ordinance forty-four sixty-five.
Yes, sir, I have a motion, a second, any questions or comments on this? Anything else?
Yeah, I got a question, so we're going to expand outside the city limits, all right, so, key is, it's a surge being offered by the city, you're going to take it, so, they don't want to take it, and that, that's not our problem.
So, we've talked about this before, um, some of these deals, so residential, we hold not really on that, because as of under state law, we actually have the ability to acquire people to utilize our services if we provide them. So we provide residential services, so no other city will have to compete with this, not compete essentially. We don't have to say anything for commercials, so we do that competitively, just like a business. So we offer competitive rates, and what we're doing is just offering that rate out, and so someone still has to sign up to pay for it just the same way. Uh, but nothing is forced, but we do encourage everyone to use, uh, Hartsville's commercial sanitation. Called Bill, that's I, he's over there.
So, so the catch is, uh, so the staff took a quick study and said, well, it's not going to impact the current service, right, seeing that?
No, we, we, commercial is what, it's, it's, we do many as well, we do network very well. So, commercials are the ones that we feel we can offer the service to, as opposed to other services we offer to the city.
Some places, they have, um, different businesses, they have their own that they use, the city will not be able to offer that.
Outside the city limits, in, inside the city limits, they currently can, but this, after second reading, if you guys approve it, we would expand outside of this territories and offer it in that, uh, kind of polygon you guys seen on the map. It's not complete three sixty, we want the targeted areas that we felt we could include, um, from a business perspective, and it would be adding routes, and making sure we do that.
All right, anything else before we take a vote on the first reading of forty-four sixty-five?
I think about this, we talked about last, we had a conversation about this last year, there was something about the people who were already in this business.
We just, it was in city limits, we discussed, we discussed going to the ordinance that would require you to use it, but we did not want, and people who were still using other services and grandfathered in. Uh, but that is a, that's a political decision for you guys, you don't want to take that off. It is allowable, what it is, uh, is allowed.
It puts us in competition with the local services.
Exactly, yes, sir.
Outside commerce.
Outside, we already are, we already are a business, again, Hartsville Commercial, we already are a business here for this, we provide outside.
Um, all those in favor of approving the first reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-five, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it, first reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-five moves forward, that brings us to item thirteen, our first resolution. Mr. Manager, if you would do your thing.
Yes, sir, it's resolution ten twenty-three oh one, approval for Hartsville Police Department to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Bureau about Colt Tobacco and Firearms and Explosives. And like, we talked before partnerships or everything, and this allows us to work with ATF. Um, we currently have, I believe, one of our vice agencies is a, also works with ATF, a task force. And it opens up many opportunities for us to partner, and it's, and it really does involve two things.
And it's a renewal of the.
It's a renewal, yes, it's a very successful partnership.
Um, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution ten twenty-three zero one. We've got a couple of motions, maybe three, um, any discussion of this resolution before we vote? Hearing none, if I vote all those in favor of approving resolution ten twenty-three zero one, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution ten twenty-three zero one moves forward. That brings us to item fourteen, the last part of our regular meeting, I would like a, if I have a break, if I could, real quick, if you may. Do five minutes? Four minutes? I'll just make it quick, nobody's.